Okay, there you go. Okay, watch what you say now. Here comes some people.
Are you? Are you, how are you trying to connect to do?
Well, I don't know if it's be yes, yeah. And then I put in the code.
Amy, who's at the office? Is it?
Manley, Betsy, myself and Brian.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is a new experience for hybrid, so it's good. I think I'll, I'll call the meeting to order. It's, I've got six thirty-three and if David and Joe join us, we'll, we'll back up a little bit if we have to. So this is the regular planning board meeting of August fourth, two thousand twenty-one. We're trying a new hybrid thing here. It's working well so far. People are welcome to be in town, the town offices in person. And our policy has that board members can choose to stay remote if they so choose and others as well. So it's work seems to be working okay. We got about nine people online and the people in town council chambers too. So I'll start with taking the role of the planning board and I'll call you all individually for the record because we're going to be hybrid here. Manley, go.
Yeah.
Betsy Randall. Betsy, you want to say yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Then we got Hershey Herfka, a remote. There she is, and I'm remote, Bill Strobe. And Jeff Minahan is otherwise engaged this afternoon. He told us he wouldn't be here yesterday. So there's four of us here, which is a quorum. So we're good. The first order of business is the meeting minutes of July seventh and the meeting minutes of July twenty-one. So I'll pull up the meeting minutes for July seven. First, I guess you got them there. I'll hang on, I'm gonna see if this works. Where am I here? Bear with me. If I share my screen, it makes any difference or not. I'm not sure how it works here. But you've got it there.
I don't believe so. It shouldn't make a difference, Bill. There we go.
Unless I talk. So so these are, I went through these. I have no comments. Does anybody have any comments or corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of July seventh.
I move me, we accept the minutes of July seventh.
Moved by Hershey. Any discussion?
I second that.
Second by Manley. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote and I guess we'll, we'll do this roll call as well because we're hybrid. So Hershey.
Hi.
Betsy. I think I heard, yep, okay, Manley.
Hi.
And I'm an eye, so that they pass. That's good. Thank you very much. So the next one is the minutes of July twenty-seven. Excuse me, I'm sorry, July twenty-first. And that included the public hearing for the singular wireless project and then the regular meeting at, after that. I had no comments on them. Anybody have any comments on those? Then I'll ask for a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from July twenty-first.
Okay, moved by Hershey, seconded, I think, by Betsy.
Yeah, I second.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll call the roll, Hershey.
Aye.
Betsy.
Aye.
Manley.
Wasn't there, but I'll say aye.
Okay, he was absent, so and I'm I, so there's three votes for us. That's good. Okay, all right, that takes care of that. I'm gonna stop sharing. Okay. So if there's anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, we'll do it that way. Otherwise, we'll, we'll proceed down through. Andrew Stortz.
Hi, I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
And this is in regards to the NBD solar thing that I know it's not on the agenda tonight. A couple of meetings ago, you guys had discussed about the sixty-day limit after the application is deemed complete. And I guess I was curious, one, as to what is the purpose of that time limit in general? And two, why isn't that being imposed as we're like over ninety days since then on that particular project?
Well, we caught up with that one. That got dealt with within maybe not sixty days, but within a certain amount of time. It just
And I assume that imposition is on us to act, but if there are things we are waiting on, I assume that that resets the clock, no?
Well, you can buy agreement with the applicant extent, so it's not, it's not a hard, hard stop.
In the past, for the applicant, so that planning boards in the past have, this plan wouldn't have been, but have dragged their feet and dragged their feet and that gives some type of reference to time so that we got our minds.
So it was, it's not a hard stop, but we, we'll be paying more attention to that as time goes on, I'm sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. The next item is a discussion of the joint public hearing with the town council on August seventeen, which I believe is two weeks from yesterday, Tuesday, regarding the marijuana cultivation and facility ordinances moratorium and planning board member attendance. So this is, I guess, we were asked to be present for that. We just, we, we decided, we forwarded our recommendations to the council without our own hearing, feeling that for expedition, EXP, EXP, and C, it wasn't necessary to have our separate hearing. So this is a joint hearing. So just to put that out there, they're gonna want planning board members to be present on that Tuesday evening, which is the hearing for the planning board ordinances that we forward to them and they're gonna take whatever action they do on them. Is there anything else that we need to deal with on that? Amy, is that just make sure it's out there?
Yeah, make sure it's out there. I just need to have an idea of who's gonna be here, you know, a couple of days.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll certainly plan to be there and
I'm in.
Okay.
You go be Zoom, obviously, Bill. And how about you, Hershey?
I, yeah, I'll be there.
Or in person?
Yeah.
On Zoom, probably. But I don't know.
Okay.
Probably, I don't know, retrenching to Zoom because of the recent developments.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then we'll, we'll send out, we don't have a we have, we have a meeting the following night. So we'll send out a reminder on that before the hearing. So, okay. There were some questions about some notations of which references we had and I've asked David to track them down for Barbara Bennett, who's making sure that's all correct. Okay. Before we head on, we had several correspondences which have been distributed to all board members and read, including from Joe Dalator, David McDermott, Gary and Nancy Wetzel and Sandy Grafiotis and Carl Person. And so they're on the record. After this meeting, they'll be officially put on the website and, and they're for the public as part of the public record. All of those had to do with the Bennett Lot Road subdivision. So thank you for your comments, everybody. I see some of you or most of you here. Okay, so the, the item we have tonight is the providential LLC five-watt subdivision on Bennett Lot Road. And just before the last meeting, we recorded a bunch of correspondence and information between ATAR, Brian Nielsen and IF&amp;W representatives. There was a memo from IF&amp;W. There was a long email chain between the parties and there was a a letter from ATAR to the town, which we didn't get till the day, the day of, with transmitting what the situation appeared to be. So it would Brian, I'll let you comment on what, what, what you got since the last time. There's a significant I'm sorry, David McDermott's shouting. Can you hear or something? All right, whatever. You're listening, I guess. Brian, could you characterize what happened in June and July with respect to IF&amp;W? And we'll take it from there.
Am I sitting in the best spot to present? Is this all right?
Yeah.
All right.
That works fine.
So in June, we had the site visit and in July, I had received some information in the letter from IF&amp;W. And so we had a quick back and forth and right now we're working through that, incorporating that in our design. At this point, they seem comfortable with a four-lot subdivision concept. They haven't approved any, you know, any final design because we haven't completed it yet. We're planning on submitting to the town six days from now on August tenth and working with IF&amp;W and the Army Corps on location, distance from the Vernal Pool as well as the stream crossing towards the entrance to the property. That's where we're at right now.
Okay, I'll, I'll start a conversation here. The findings of the IF&amp;W were significant, in my view. Were very significant, in my view. We, we've been planning along, going piece, step by step through the process. We had, you had proposed a cluster based on a conventional layout, the number of lots, the conventional layout. That was determined to be a complete application with that preliminary permit, preliminary plan set in early May, May five. And we scheduled a public hearing on May nineteenth and we held that public hearing on June second, I think. There's been no action taken since then. And that's been on the basis that we're moving along and as you get information, we would get it and deal with it. That didn't come till just before the twenty-first last time. The IF&amp;W assessment really calls, kind of puts the, the project in a bothersome spot with respect to some of the fundamental assumptions that got us here. And that's new information that we didn't have until we got this far. It might have been sought earlier in the process, but that's fine. Here, here it is. They found that the Western Vernal Pool was a likely habitat for dangerous species, the turtles. And they originally asked for you to lop off two lots, lot five and lot four. And when you're in discussion with them about whether they would accept one lot, but they also would require covenants on all, basically all the other lots. So all, all the lots that you're proposing are, are, are affected by this IF&amp;W finding. And you're, the, the memo from IF&amp;W is pretty clear on that and, and your conclusions are, are what they are. I think what I'm troubled with at this point, based on the new information, is a number of things. I'll just lay this out for the board to consider and you to consider. That the, if the IF&amp;W restrictions were known when you were laying out the conventional subdivision, I don't think there would have been five lots. In fact, I'm sure there would have been fewer than that. They, they, there's, there's at least two that are directly affected by the setback. By, oh, there's David Galbraith. Hi, David. But they are on lot five and lot one and perhaps others. And then the other thing was the, the roadway that the conventional subdivision was counting on went right through that wetland. And I, I'm not convinced that any of that would be viable. So I, I have a fundamental question that if we're messing around with a cluster now based on that previous conventional layout, I think we might be upside down. And so that, that's, I'm troubled by that because I don't think we have a viable concept with a cluster that we're dealing with in the preliminary plan that we had deemed complete and that went to hearing. So I think we'd have to back up a lot, a long way to deal with the, any cluster based on the conventional layout, because I don't see how the conventional layout would have been viable with the IF&amp;W information that we now have. So that's, 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 that's where I'm, I'm getting to. And I've been thinking a lot about this and I just, the process is laid out, the process is going forward, we're here, this is what we know. And I mean, it's, it's clear that the preliminary design, that preliminary design, that plan that was deemed complete is, is, is not viable, is not approvable because of the changes and the continued changes are in question. So that, so that's, that's a fact. That's where we're at. Yet the other place where we're at now is that the, on the ordinance one twenty-one thirty-one, which is, has to do with the status of preliminary plans in middle inaction, goes on to say that after thirty days of a hearing or sixty days of a, of an application is complete, both of which are passed by some lot, the planning board shall take action. We have to act. And we have several options under that paragraph that include approving the preliminary plan, whether or without modification, and we're certainly not there. We can disapprove the preliminary plan. And I guess that is what it is. Or we could extend the timeframe and the ordinance for, for dealing with the preliminary plans. Those are, those are our options tonight. And I think we need to talk about what we want to do and what you guys prefer to do with that. We, we don't have to extend the timeframe, but it's an option under that paragraph. Because I think frankly, if you, if we go ahead and extend the timeframe, you're gonna have to go back to square one essentially anyway, in my view. I don't see how you can go forward with a clustering of lots determined by the conventional subdivision that unless you can show that those are viable now with IF&amp;W information. And I don't know how you can do that, but I haven't, I'm, I'm talking about what I'm, what I'm looking at and seeing the, the barriers to that. So if you can continue, you know, for thirty days or a couple of meetings, I don't know how you can go back and deal with a conventional situation first and then the clustering second in, in, in any kind of near timeframe. And if we go that direction, we're essentially starting over anyway. So I'm wondering whether the prudent thing to do for, for the planning board's purposes and your purposes is to either disapprove the plan and have you start over because you have to start over anyway. Or you could, you could choose to withdraw the application so you don't get disapproval and, and, and choose what to do. So it's a, it's a kind of a severe situation we're in here. So having said all that, I think the planning board needs to think about this and talk about it tonight with you. If we, we gotta do one of these things under, under the ordinance because based on the new information we have, which really set us, set you back rather than moves it forward. Is there any, any questions from the board on what I just said?
Yes, I personally like to say, see just the time extended for, let's say ninety days and give them an opportunity. The thing that bothers me about them starting all over, there's a lot of funds that were put into accounts and I assume that the planner has been using them. A lot of that will not have to be redone. But some of it may have to be done.
Yeah, there is that, there is that. The, the, the technical work, I think, gets redone no matter what. It's a question of whether it's, it's in an active file or a new file. Because I, I think a, a, all, all the work, from my view of what we've seen for the layout of the lots and all that, you gotta go back to the drawing board. But so, okay, that, that's, that point of view would allow us to proceed a little farther before we
Yeah. Have I made Mr. Chair?
Let me ask the other board members for comment first and then we'll go to you, Brian. Thanks. Anybody, Hershey or Betsy, have any comment at this point? You're muted, Hershey.
I guess I'd like to, I, I, I sort of agree with you, Bill, that we're sort of back to square one in some ways and this is in fact devastating news, but I'd actually like to hear from Brian, I guess, before I say anymore.
Okay.
What, what their plan is or what they'd like to do. So.
Okay, Brian, that's a segue to you then.
Is Betsy gonna say anything? Did Betsy want to weigh in?
Oh, sorry.
Brian, go first.
Technical side, no disagreements, Mr. Chair. But I also agree with Manley. If we could do some hybrid approach where I go back, reconfigure the conventional plan, perhaps work with four lots at the the roadway out of that Western Vernal Pool and present both of them, the cluster and the conventional at the same time with, you know, the condition that we can't move forward until the board accepts the new conventional design.
So, so here, I'll now ask my question. As I understand, if you go with option one of Fish and Wildlife's letter, it seemed like they, they, their recommendation, I assume you have to act on the recommendation, was that you eliminate four and five. So do you see a way in the conventional plan of getting four, four actual lots on the, on the map despite their recommendations?
Haven't fully explored it, I believe.
All right.
I, I've looked at it. And I looked at it this afternoon a little bit. Let me put it up here. Hang on a second. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. I hope it works. Is that? Everybody got that? Yeah. Okay, this was the conventional thing that where we had the five lots generated. This is the Vernal Pool that now has a two hundred and fifty-foot swath around it. And that, here's, well, essentially lot five, which, which, which is out, that, that's very, that's very close to what lot five is in the cluster. Then you got lot one, which is closer to the Vernal Pool than anything you got in the cluster. So that, I, I don't know how that would be viable. And then you got the road going right through. And I don't know how that is viable through a protected area. So you can take a look at it, but I, I, based on this conventional layout, I don't know how you have even four lots. But you haven't, you haven't, you haven't developed that yet either. And then there's the question of the northern pool, which IF&amp;W says may not be as critical as the western one for the landing's turtle, but with what we know now, I, my position would be you'd have to go farther with proving that this is permissible. We didn't do that last time because you often don't do that with the sketch plan. But with everything we know now, I think I would have to be convinced that permitting of all these things was a viable, viable thing before we can accept that conventional layout. Or you can do a conventional layout off of Bennett Lot Road with whatever you can get there with, with, with fewer lots. So I, I, I guess you, we, we could allow you to take a look at that or we could, we could and if that's what you'd like to do, I'll, I'll stop sharing this.
I would, Mr. Chair, so I definitely agree. One and five would be gone. I would be doing basically starting from square one with a new road design to attempt to get four lots. It would, it would not, it would not look similar to the conventional design as before the board currently.
Right. So what I'm saying then, I mean, it goes back to what I'm saying. If we've been down the road here a number of months, based on our action, I think, last December, saying that this, that we would swap these lots from the conventional to the, to a cluster. And then we had the resource protection issue that played out and that we did not have resource protection here, issue here at all for setbacks. And then we got into moving this forward, allow you to further evaluate this. And now we're sitting here saying what, everything we've done is out the window and we're starting over again. And so I'm not so sure that you can start under the, under the same application. I guess, I guess you could. But are we, are we extending a preliminary design and action on a preliminary, preliminary, what happens in thirty or sixty days when we're in no man's land waiting for you to get a new preliminary design? And we have to, we have to act on this preliminary design, in my view. And I don't know, I'm, I'm struggling with how to extend this and still have a process that works rather than a situation where you just say we're gonna take a whole new look at this thing. I don't know how the application process that we have, the application you made, applies to a whole new concept. Hershey?
I, I, as I understand, Bill, we're allowed to rescind a vote if we, there's a process for doing that. So I would suggest we rescind the cluster approval, go back to then a conventional plan and both parties seem to agree on a extension of time. Let them take another shot at what they want to submit. I, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
I have to check the rules. I don't think you can go back more than a meeting or two to modify a vote. And the, the, the motion to modify it has to be the person who made the motion or the person who seconded the motion. And I think time runs out after one or two meetings. Dave, are you familiar with that at all?
There is, there is time limits on there. The other thing that the board, if, if you keep this active case going and that doesn't necessarily have to be decided tonight, but when we were reviewing the design that we're talking about tonight, there was a waiver granted for the length of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
At one point, so when we were talking about that, so with a new design, I would say you'd have to revisit that. And I think you can do it either continuing off this design or starting from a new. I, I, I think essentially you're gonna be back at the same place and that's my opinion, but so how, how you do it, you know, I don't know which is cleaner, which way. But that being said, I think it would be fair at least to perhaps table the discussion with this evening. Give give ATAR an opportunity to go back, say, you know, wait, give them an extension for say two weeks. And then, you know, once they have a chance to sort of put some plans together, what have you, then we can, the board can decide what they want to do and maybe ATAR will decide, hey, here's what we wanted. I mean, it's not much longer or you deny it and go away. I would leave it to the applicant of how they would like to start. But again, I, I think we're in the same spot either way. Now, you know, that being said, if a case does start over because the information, a lot of the information, IF&amp;W from when we were talking about whether or not they had that original wetland or not, all of that can be brought or will be brought into play. And obviously we've got all of the notes. So I'm trying to make sure that we, what if you close this case now, everything about that case is closed and we are genuinely starting over. That's new applications, new fees, new, new everything. And, and again, so that's a consideration for the applicant also. But I would say if they want the two weeks or whatever. But the only snarl about that is that gives Brian about one week to really turn, turn something around. I, I don't know if he has time to do that or again, do a new application.
You, but I think with thirty days is more in line. It's a big development, what's happened. I think that needs some time to sift through everything to understand what's the right thing to do here. Plus, he's gonna talk with his people.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's all good. And that, that would be a productive way to proceed, but the dilemma I've got on my mind is let's say these guys come up with an alternative development scheme and we, but we can And we, but we consider that from scratch. So it's not, we're, we're, would that be approving this with modifications? No, it would be a new plan. So we have, I don't know how we don't disapprove this plan. It, because if they start over with a new plan, when do we disapprove this plan? We just pretend it didn't happen?
It's on the burden on the applicant, how to show how this whole thing flows and everything. They're quite qualified to come up with some reasoning of whichever direction they may just wanna. They may.
This, this has been a tough site from day one, and everybody acknowledges that, and the applicant acknowledges that, and Brian and ATAR acknowledge that. And we went along and we, 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 we went with it. We went, we did what we had to do under the ordinance. Regardless of what some people's opinions are about what the ordinance says and doesn't say. I've been a champion of following the process. And we all have been a champions of following the process. Now, we follow the process, we got real, real environmental and wetland stuff from the state agency that, that deals with this stuff. And it's a, it's a, it's a bomb on this thing. So.
She would like to talk if she could.
I'm sorry?
That's he would like to talk.
Thank you, Betsy, sorry, go ahead.
No problem. For, for me, I don't think that I could approve anything without a conventional plan that's been done with a letter from IFW that states that they've reviewed it. I don't know, my, my issue with extending it is that it's just gonna, the ball is just gonna keep rolling, rolling, rolling. Can we do conditions like, could we set like a 30-day with 30 days until that we have to like approve a preliminary plan? And if everything isn't in by, you know, 30 days, then move and start over? Can we give? Can we give some, but say, we're not gonna go back and forth. We need to have like a complete thorough in front of us.
I'd like to speak when I get a minute.
I'm sorry, Manley, say it again, please.
I'd like to speak when I get a minute.
Go ahead.
What I see before us, you always talk about unforeseen consequences. What we, from my viewpoint, what we've got here is an opportunity to limit the number of lots on property. And this is what I mean by that. If I was the developer, I would say, well, am I gonna put a road in? How much is that road gonna cost? Or am I gonna do two lots, which I can do without any limitations? And then down the road, I, to the people to buy those two lots could one or two lots. And so if we don't look at this in a reasonable way, but just, by just shutting them down, we're gonna lose conservation here. Because if it was me, I would say, let's get my two lots and call it a day. And there's gonna be no restrictions on anything. And then five years from now, the people can have children and they're gonna keep developing this. Right now, if we approve a three lot or a four lot, that's it. It's not gonna be anymore. They're gonna, yeah, hot top rolled in and end of the story. That's, that's what my speech on unforeseen consequences.
Bill, may I chime in?
Please.
Yeah, I just, I, I think at, you know, yes, it's an unforeseen consequence, but we know it's in there. I mean, obviously, we know that there's problems with that lot now. So I wouldn't say that even if they wanted to go in and put in a private drive and do that kind of thing, that they're, they'd have to still meet whatever setbacks. And, you know, we're aware of it. So I wouldn't say it's sort of, they can go in and do what they, what they please. So, you know, that's the one thing. I'm also trying, I'm also trying to think procedurally, what's gonna be cleanest? But.
Can I just? My, my question hasn't been answered yet. Can we do a limit that says, like a condition to say, we'll extend this for 30 days? But if we don't have all the information that we need in 30 days to make a decision on it, then we disapprove it?
We can do that.
Because I'm okay extending it if there is a very clear line that we're, that it's not gonna keep going on and on and on and on. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Can we, can we hear from Brian if that works for you?
Believe that it does. I just have one question. Mr. Chair, you had questions kind of proving crossing over the north vernal pool was permissible. Now, both IFW and our own vernal pool or wetland scientists has said that vernal pool is non-significant. What would the board need to see? Because the conventional, you know, I don't believe it's the intent of the ordinance to do a full design for the conventional plan to move forward with the cluster, which is why you have to do it at sketch. So what, what specifically, especially if we're gonna do the 30-day deadline, would the board need to see?
You, I lay that on you guys, and you have to show us the viability, rather than just saying you can permit a big wetlands impact. I think when we talked about this earlier with you and Ken, we were talking about mitigation and offsets and other towns and other things. It wasn't an easy wetlands permit to get. It was not like the crossings you had in the, in the cluster. You had to go find land and set it aside, and it would be land probably in some other community and.
None of that changed, though, since the initial, that crossing's not gonna change. I don't, I don't understand what's changed about.
Can I just say briefly, just in the emails that I was, when I was looking through them, you hadn't asked them about the conventional plan. But then I don't think they responded, so you reached back out and you said that we had already approved a cluster. And then all of the, all of the emails following that, they were referring to the cluster. They weren't referring to the conventional.
All right, so I have them right in front of me. So what I said to Rebecca, tell at IFW, said to clarify, it is just the western vernal pool that is being considered significant as potential landings turtle habitat, correct? That's the question. The one to the northern portion of the site remains non-significant.
Can I just, can I, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt, Ryan. As I remember, part of the impetus for the cluster plan was to avoid crossing that very now insignificant vernal pool.
Yeah, I mean, you still don't wanna impinge on any way. You don't have, the question is whether it's permissible, and it is permissible.
Well, it goes through a process.
That cluster development is at our discretion. And part of the, part of the motivation for cluster development is environmental concerns. So if that's no longer a concern, that sort of changes the litmus. And that's information that we're only hearing from Fish and Wildlife now.
It is, I'll, I'll point out, Fish and Wildlife also gave you guys another option, which was to study it for a year and, and see whether these limitations are real and, 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 and deal with it through 2022 and reach some conclusions at that point. You wanna comment on that possibility that was offered to you?
To finish my initial point, if I may, Mr. Chair. But to comment on, to comment on that, just while we're on it, yes, it's an option. I'd like to discuss it with my client. We would have to wait till April 2022, which may be economically viable, which may not be economically viable. I can't really speak to that right now, but that's, that's where we're at. So back to Hershey's point. All right, let's just lay it out on the table. If anybody at all wants to design in South Berwick, you make them do a conventional design. So it's permissible. It's a measuring tool to allow you to do a cluster design. And the cluster designs, they're smaller, they're less impact in pretty much every circumstance you could possibly do them. And, you know, that's why you do them. And so trying to prove the viability of the conventional at sketch, it, I understand that it puts everyone in a, in a difficult position. So I reached out to IFW, also agreed here that that vernal pool is non-significant. Same with the vernal pool or the wetland scientists we had investigated in the first place. So it's
Okay.
You're able to impact those, there's fees, there's the crossings involved, but it's permissible.
Permitable by, by DEP under right circumstances.
Now, was Tuesday, July 20th, 2021.
Now, okay, but let's go to the, the north, the west, the west vernal pool, the one that is, is the, the issue. I mean, that wipes out two or three lots, doesn't it? And also with your, you're, you're, you're putting a road across there. You'd have to, you can't, can you put a road across a protected habitat? I don't think so.
Chair, I will redesign the conventional design. It will, road will not go through that, but I will drop one lot and I will attempt to get four lots. And if it, and if, if clearly, if I'm going through the process, unable to get four lots, I will, I will drop it down to three lots.
Hey, can I, I, can I ask a question, just a, some clarity? The plan you submitted, Brian, that has this gray area, that's a covenant boundary, it says?
So that is the 250-foot setback from the significant vernal pool that.
Right. So can I, can I ask, though, are you counting that as open space as well? And if, if it is open space, isn't it open space within the lot lines of people's property now?
I have to check, now that you mention it, I, I was initially counting it as open space, but it is a no disturb buffer. So I have to check the specific South Berwick rules for open space to make sure that's still allowed.
Okay.
Covenant boundary basically says that you wouldn't be allowed to do any sort of clearing within that area.
Right.
Outside of.
And also, I, I think, and I think one of the letters pointed this out, so I looked it up. But the open space requirement is that it has to be equal to or more than the combined size of the lots. Is that, did I get that right?
I would have to check.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're meeting your open space requirement, if you, you haven't. I think it was, it was 140, 27, 47, 140, 27? I can't remember now.
I would like to make a motion that we give them 30 days back to us and tell us what they're gonna do.
Is there a second on that?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, at the end, I'm kind of certainly agreeing with you, reading the strict definition ordinance without some specific plan to go forward. Now, I agree with Manley, I certainly don't want to go back to square one, where we have to pay all the same application fees for a nearly similar project, where we're just making, especially with the cluster design, we're really just dropping that lot five and adjusting some boundaries of lot lines. And for the most part, it will remain the same. So the bulk of the engine won't change, but.
Hang on, hang on, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, Brian. That, that's not it. You're not, you're not done. You got all these covenants for restrictions, which we would need to be comfortable with. And you've got a road redesign, where IFW wants you to have a dead end or a hammerhead or something. And, and, and the curbing changes and the stormwater management changes. It's, it's not just dropping a lot and moving some lot lines around. There's, there's other things, including the roadway waiver that are in play here. If, if we don't, we, we, we concurred with a roadway length waiver based on a five-lot cluster subdivision that has certain trade-offs. I'm not, I, I don't know what the board's thoughts are, but I, I don't know that that's, that follows you with your redesign.
I, I'd like to say that there's a human part about this that he, as board members, ought to have some compassion. I know people love to hate developers, because I was one at one time. But he is a man that has, I, I don't know him, I wouldn't know if he walked in here today. But I can tell you that I know that he's laid out a lot of money, engineering fees. He's laid a lot of money to see this thing go forward. And I'd like, just like to see us give him some space here, so they can, they've had a big thing dropped in their lap. Give them some space to figure out what they're gonna do. I know if it was my son that was trying to do this, I would, I would feel awful. And I think we as board members ought to have some compassion toward this man to figure out what the heck is we gonna do. We can do the same boat 30 days from now, if we think we want to shut this thing down very easily. It's not gonna hurt us a bit to give this man some space.
Okay.
To an extent, I agree with you, Manley. I just want to make sure that it's, that in the end, we're the ones that are making the decision. So I'm okay giving, I'm okay giving 30 days to whether or not you wanna, they want to continue with this project or if they just wanna withdraw. But if they do want to continue with the project, then it's up to us to decide how we do it.
Everything's up to us, we can.
It's up to us, but we have to do it under the ordinance. And that, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm being very careful about and, and I'm struggling with here. If we give them 30 days to take another look at it, we're still have to act on the preliminary plan that is on the table. And if it, if it revised, I suppose we could, we could accept a modified preliminary plan. But it's certainly not gonna be anything close to what we saw to begin with.
Can I, can I ask, if, if the only impediment to reapplying is filling out the application and the fees, can we waive the fees? So we just, we say no to this and they start, they're starting over again. You know, can we just do that? Or is that, is there not the paper trail we want in the file somehow?
I think that's basically what extensions does, without saying it, Hershey, that we are waiving some of these fees. We certainly know this development better than any other development they had before us, you know?
I, I don't, I don't think there's a provision to waive the fees. I'd like to defer to Amy if she wants. I, so that'd be, that'd be a town issue.
I, I don't, I don't think there's a way to do that.
All right.
When, when I did touch base with the town attorney yesterday, and when I asked about what would be the impacts of a new versus, you know, moving ahead or starting again, and he said it'd be a complete new application, new fees, new application, new plans, new everything.
So in order to my, my problem is they're, they're starting over anyway. And as far as I'm concerned, they don't have a conventional, and Brian says they don't have a conventional layout. And we'd be starting from, from, from scratch, and it's a whole new ballgame. And, 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 but may, maybe, maybe they need some time to consider this because Brian is sitting in a hot chair and not dealing with his client and, and can't, can't make decisions now because he hasn't got his, his whole team together here. And that, and that's, that's an unreasonable thing to, to do. So I, yes, David?
Yeah, sorry, I was just thinking on, on that. I don't want necessarily for ATAR and their clients to get pushed out an entire month. Perhaps it's reasonable for the board to at least extend it till the next meeting, two weeks from now. And let, and if, and if, and if, you know, we could even take something in writing, if ATAR feels that they're making progress, they want another couple of weeks to pull things together, the board could extend it at that time. Or they could, if Brian wanted to come earlier and bring this back before the board. So that gives them two different dates in which they could play with, two weeks from now or a month from now.
And, and, and how do we disapprove of the preliminary plan, which is already out the window?
I think that if there is a resubmital, which I know there will be, we could do that and as, as an amendment to a preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay.
I think that would be legal, but again.
I think the 30 days is. I think the, the thirty days is if, from my experience in dealing with uh engineering firms, it's fine if this was the only client they have. But this is not the only client they have. They're gonna have to go home probably this evening. They'll get a phone call. And then they'll come in uh in a few days and then ATAR has got to block out some time. It's not like this gentleman can say uh to ATAR, you do my thing right now and me. I don't, it works that way in the real life.
Right.
Well, you know, Manley, I, I, I run an engineering firm and every client feels that way.
Well, but in, in, again, in this situation, I think that if the board extends it to a month, there isn't a, a, I guess, a chance of if the client wants to come back before then in two weeks, they can, but I think, who knows, Brian could contact his client thirty minutes after this meeting's over. And the client may say, start again, or I assume that they will want to keep the same project moving along is, is what my assumption is. And I, I think Brian wants to just be able to clarify that. So I think that's reasonable.
That's right. But I just, I, I wrote down all my thoughts going into the meeting and I, I, I gave it to Amy and she's given it to the uh board members present. Um, okay, I want to which is, I, I, it's all the points that we've made, but I, I want to make that part of the record. And if you can put that on the, on the website, Amy, uh, and, and make it available to everybody here. Uh, electronic, that'd be, that'd be, that, I, I, I didn't, nothing I said tonight is outside of the parameters, but I did it to organize my thoughts. I think it's a good record where we're at. And I think.
I don't. Meetings.
I'm sorry.
How many days are our next two meetings from now?
Uh, well, it's a, next one's the eighteenth. No.
Eight, eighteen, and then September first.
And first, how many days is that from now?
Twenty-eight.
By giving it the thirty uh by September first, they need to convince us one way or another, we're gonna make a vote here and take care of this thing.
Yeah. So our, with the, with our, with our, our, our question at that time, if they don't pull the application voluntarily to a, a, avoid a disapproval, which I've heard is a route which is sometimes desirable. Then we either agree to start over again by amending the application in some fashion that we don't know about now, or we disapprove the application. That, that, I think we're looking at that. And I think.
They got, or they can pull it like you said.
Yeah. I, I, I've been told by certain parties that rather than to risk a disapproval of some developers will decide to, to pull it based on the difficulties that and, and deal with those situations. I just don't want to underscore um, uh, or under, under, underplay the magnitude of the problems that came up two weeks ago. In my mind, uh, uh, there, there's been, you know, thoughts of this and thoughts of that, but there's been no documentation of the environmental sensitivity in the way that the IFW came through. I saw the IFW stuff. I said, my God, they, they dropped a bomb on this thing. And, and, and I knew that Brian and ATAR was going to be scrambling to fight, to figure out something, but i- i- as we've gone through tonight, going back to fundamentals and building it up and all that. Um, it's, it's, it's uh, you know, make sure what it's water over the dam. Maybe IFW review should have been done earlier, but that's water over the dam. And maybe the, maybe the applicant would have been happier to get that information earlier uh rather than to continue with, with the, with these problems now, but that's water over the dam.
You matter. Agreed. I will certainly be reaching out to IFW earlier in my future applications. That being said, searching for blending turtles can only happen kind of in the April to now period. So.
Yeah, I know. I understand. I understand. I'm not being critical at all, uh, Brian. It's just that um, um, the impact of this is, is very large. And unexpected. So unexpected to some anyway.
Like to make a new motion that we uh extended thirty days with a with uh the admonishment to the developer that we intend to uh make some decisions. Come to the end of that thirty days, bet the draw or else they're gonna get turned down.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Manley, second by Betsy. Any more discussion?
Can I, can I amend it that we just give them their thirty day extension? I, you know, I, I don't know what we'll do. I don't know what we're gonna get. I don't know what we're gonna see. So I, you know, if we want to give them thirty days to sort something else out, let's just give them thirty days and we'll have to see what it looks like. I can't, we can't say what we're gonna do.
My, my, my problem with that, I understand what you're saying, Hershey. My problem with that is that we, 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 if it looks like it's open ended, gonna go on for months.
Well, we can decide in thirty days that we're gonna disapprove then. No, that's always an option. I just, I just, it just feels like a threat, like either, I, they get there, but that's fine. That's fine. I, I withdraw my men.
It's not my intention to make that. It's my intention is to let them know, don't come tell some significant progress.
I, I think, I think the point that Manley makes with that is, is the, is another way of making the point that I'm trying to make to you. That this is a serious situation.
Absolutely. Alright.
Okay, then I'll, if we're ready to vote, let's vote. I'll, I'll go backwards. Manley.
Aye.
Betsy.
Aye.
Hershey.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Brian's tough night, I know.
Almost.
Yeah.
I did it a little bit. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Have a great night.
Nice to fish with me.
Yes.
I'm gonna go read about blending turtles.
Pretty.
I think we have one in the back actually, but I'm not sure. Okay.
Alright, uh, let's go back to the agenda. If I can find it, I gotta pull up the right file. There it is. Uh, I guess fourth agenda. Where is it? Come on. Where is it? I thought I had it here. There it is. Sorry. Alright, I got it. I'm sorry. Um, we have no other business tonight. Uh, the other projects, there have been no action. Um, uh, does any member have a comment that they haven't been able to make tonight so far?
I'm just. Sorry, go ahead, Betsy.
I'm just gonna say, I was wondering if there was ever something sent to town council about the solar moratorium.
I think Jeff took that on and he's not here. We'd have to ask Jeff. He was gonna draft something, I believe.
Uh, David, you were gonna take a whack at that, weren't you?
Or Dave, were you?
Say, say again.
The, the recommendation to council about the solar moratorium. About them enacting a solar moratorium.
Oh, I, no, that was forwarded to the board, but they, that would be a legal action that they'd have Phil draft on that.
So, so they, they're aware of our recommendation?
Uh, Amy?
I, I'm pretty sure the minutes that I was just looking at said that Jeff was going to draft something to send to them.
Oh, that would have been in the uh.
In the, in the minutes from the last meeting, I think.
You. Let's take a look. Alright, hang on, hang on. Jeff was going to show up at the sign hearing. I know that.
Right.
Hold on.
No, actual uh.
It said, uh, Mr. Menahan makes a motion to prepare and send a memo to recommend a moratorium on solar farms to the town council. Man, uh, Ms. Randall uh seconded the motion. It, it wasn't uh.
Determined.
It wasn't determined.
It wasn't clear who was gonna write the memo. Is that the, is that what you're saying?
Can we assign that to you, David?
I would, I would, uh, I can certainly chase it, chase it down, but I think they'll likely have Phil drafted.
No, 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 no. We're not, we're not drafting the moratorium. We're just drafting the recommendations from the plan.
Oh, I, I will draft the mo- a memo.
All, all it's gonna say is we've been dealing with these things, discussion, and we, we think they ought to do, do the work to draft a moratorium. That's, it just, and then, then it's in their court. Is that, yeah, okay.
And, and while we're, thanks for bringing that up, Betsy. While we're on that subject, have we gotten anything from DEP or inland fish and wildlife regarding, is it MBD, their solar farm? Cause that was one of the conditions. And if Andrew is still here, if Mr. Storks is still here, I'm looking at my participant list. Um, he was also promised something as part of those conditions and I just, I don't want them to be forgotten.
Well, no, he was, the, the conditions are, they, they were to reach agreement on certain uh buffer.
Right, right. So I just, I want to just, you know, I just, I don't want it to fall through the cracks that we just forget about it and none of those things happen.
So back to the moratorium, it's, it's just a request uh, reporting that the planning board has requested that they consider a moratorium. And that's, that's all we need to do. And David, I'm, I'm have to, I'm laying that on you.
Okay, that's alright.
Great, okay.
Hershey, we, D-Solar, we haven't received anything from them. So they're, they're be on the next uh, let's see what we.
And, and I, can I ask, I assume when we've approved something with conditions, if the conditions aren't met, they don't receive a building permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. When we, we approve something, whether it's with conditions or not, that goes to code enforcement off, to code enforcement and, and technically we're, we're done with it at that point. And it's a, it's a, the, the other realm of, of a building permits takes over.
Okay. So hey, Amy, I guess I'll just throw it to your court that Joe Rosell has this on his radar.
Yeah.
That MBD can't move forward without the conditions being met that we prescribed when we approved it.
I mean, the facts have.
But David?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I, um, I've been doing work down in South Portland and one thing that I really liked actually is the way that they've started just recently framing their conditions of approval. Is it list a condition of approval? Uh, basically who or what department is responsible for that condition? And then when that condition sort of comes into effect, so they'll say you have to have your silt fencing up before it'll let you do this. You have to have this done before that. And then who the responsible party is. So it'd be the code enforcement officer or town council or you know, fire department or whatever. I just, it, I just liked the format of it. And I thought, if you guys liked it, maybe I could show it to you.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's hear our next approval.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So just a reminder about the, and we'll send a reminder out before the meeting on the, uh, they want us at the uh marijuana hearing on the seventeenth, so.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
I was hoping you would. We, we.
So reliable.
And.
Service announcements?
I'm sorry?
I, I do public service announcements.
Sure.
And just an FYI, town council is gonna be, is overlooking the comprehensive plan. So if anybody from the public would like to put in some input, please check on the town council's agenda because they are, they are in discussions right now about. Kind of all, we really could use some extra board members. So if anybody thinks it'd be really fun to be on the planning board, which so most days it is, you know, I think you can love an application.
I was gonna, I, I will get back to Manley's uh motion in a second, but that was my comment too. Um, I've, I've uh made it known that I'm gonna be stepping off at the end of the year uh to spend more time with grandchildren that are coming. And um, um, and uh, I, I think I heard Jeff Menahan's running for town council. So. So, so uh, we've generated a whole lot of interest by a whole lot of parties and they've been coming to meetings by Zoom. And I, I would urge you seriously to consider donating some more of your time uh to be on the planning board. It's, it's, it's not bad. It's actually quite satisfying. I've done it for thirteen years. The, you do, it's a good, a good thing you can do for your community. And uh, all the projects are, is interesting as what we've been through tonight sometimes. But no, I, I strongly urge you guys to, that are, that are interested to, you know, step, step up as an alternate. Don't, you don't have to come in as a, as a, as a full member, but uh, please consider that. Alright, we're back to Manley. I've got a second to Manley's uh motion to adjourn.
Again.
Alright, second by Betsy. All in favor, I don't need a roll call, I just need a hand. Alright, thank you very much. Good night. Good folks.
Good luck tomorrow, Bill.
Yes, thank you. We'll need, uh.
Well, to the family, you know?
Yeah, I'm not doing anything. I'm just gonna be around. My, my daughter-in-law is having a baby tomorrow.